All right, so this is Councilman Redd meeting to the order for October 25th, 2016. Mayor Barkley Cabral.
Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Mr. Pearson.
Here.
Ms. Brett.
Here.
Ms. Warren.
Here.
Ms. Bar.
Here.
Councilperson Pearson, you will lead us to the invitation.
I just come tonight, I just come once again to this gathering. Thank God for my life, I'm so sorry to hear you in the courtroom one more time. Thank for watching over me through the ride, through the ride safely. We pray for God and bless him to everyone that's here, Father God, as he blessed them in my life. I hope to come down to the close of another year and a season, but three of our comrades, I pray for God that he just be with them, Father God, in the next chapter of their life. Just be with them, God, and keep them safe. God, I pray for God to continue to look upon our employees and watch over them, to go by the duty of what our lives have been doing to us, God, you brought us from a mile or a mile long way, you helped us improve, save, we just thank you for it. Couldn't do without you, you stand in our, we're better for taking the meat than the service of our God, just hope on our minds, Lord, so we can take all this share. This is Jesus' name we pray.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of October 11th, 2016. The floor is open for motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion to approve the minutes of October 11th, 2016.
Any discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. I was in favor, so you can both say aye. Aye. I was opposed. Minutes approved. Minutes, the next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of October the 18th, 2016. The floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion to approve the minutes of October 18th, 2016. Second motion.
All right, Chair recognizes Councilman Brett. Any discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. I was in favor, so you can both say aye. Aye. I was opposed. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to amend the agenda to move communications to the audience to now before the motion passes.
There's been a motion, a second, to remove the communication of the audience up to this point in time in the agenda. There's been a motion, a second, and a discussion. I was in favor, so you can both say aye. Aye. I was opposed. Motion passes. Mr. Chair. You're next.
Um.
I'm sorry.
I'm a girl. I got them. Why don't y'all vote to move communication from the audience to first instead of doing C business?
Just go through it. If you want to be oversteeped, go ahead and do it.
I couldn't do that. Actually, you did a good deal.
You could, if only you were just...
You just had a habit of doing that in the last several months, and I just wondered what's the reasoning behind it. Anyway, Amble Side subdivision. Interesting subdivision. Developed in 2007. I understand that is prior to your taking over as mayor.
Actually, prior to before I came on the council.
Okay, well, then you got on the council and then you became mayor, but there wasn't anything really done until y'all adopted this resolution, Lex Councilmate. Right.
Because we understood from the previous mayor, that he had adopted it. By his actions, but it wasn't done by council actions, so we, council, council decided to do what he had done in the reputation.
Right.
As, as far as he determined.
Right. That's fine. Well, you can rest assured that when y'all leave office, Lou's not going to catch any slack over something like this or anything else.
You're threatening the form?
No, I'm promising. I'm promising. I'm not threatening, but I'm promising. Well, that's your problem. This was your value by Marsh Properties, Dale Marsh. Lou took it into the city, in the city limits or whatever, during his tenure. But my problem with this is that there are six or eight houses out there that are occupied, and now all the sewage runs down to a pumping station in the back of the property, which is about 150 yards from Blue Eye Creek. I don't think it goes anywhere from there. I think it stops right there. I don't think it's ever been connected to the city sewer line. And this, on this resolution, says that they will connect to the city sewer line on Jackson Trace Road. Where is that exactly? Where is the sewer line on Jackson Trace Road?
Well, I thought you had all the facts about this situation.
I'm asking you questions. Do you know?
I'm not a water department, a sewer department.
You're a city council person.
Well, I'm sure you didn't know. Excuse me. Oh, Danny.
We're two minutes into your three minutes.
Yeah, you were two minutes.
Where is the sewer line on Jackson Trace Road?
Come from the north on Pat and Chapel to Jack and Drake.
Just right there at the four way?
Then we go back to 77th Avenue.
Does it come all the way up Jackson Trace Road and then turn?
Oh, right about there.
Pat and Chapel Church?
Yes.
Well, then how comes things that James Park used to own the sewer? If the sewer line is there, why wouldn't they be on the sewer? My point is...
It doesn't cross the front of the city, James. It goes north from Amble Side to Pat and Chapel Road.
Right. So it doesn't meet, it doesn't come here.
No. Okay, you have enough to see, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, that's another reason. But anyway, there are two brand new pumps there sitting on the ground up there outside of the pump reservoir. Now, I know that Danny has told AM that the place was vandalized in May.
It was what?
Vandalized in May.
Well, I don't know, I didn't tell them that.
And somebody stole all the copper wire?
That's true, but I don't know what they can tell you.
Well, it doesn't look like there's ever been a meter connected.
Oh, you about that?
Doesn't appear to be. There's a bird nest in the power locks.
That's after the fact, it was stolen.
So what I'm saying is, if this is not hooked up to the sewer line, then it has to be. If it is hooked up to the sewer line from the pump station all the way in the back, how do you get from all the way in the back way over to Jackson Trace Road? Because all the sewage is going toward the creek.
There's a force...
But then it pumps...
There's a force might...
And then it's going to pump back up the road.
As per the design by itself.
Okay, well, then somebody's going to have to prove, somebody's going to have to prove that the subdivision is hooked up to the main sewer line, because I don't think it is, and I don't think it ever has been. And there's a ditch, this dug around the pump reservoir, which is about six or eight feet tall, 10 or 12 feet across. You've got pumping trucks going in there two or three times a week to pump out the sewage out of the reservoir when it ought to be connected to the sewer line where it's supposed to go.
The box is on order, and the control box is on order, and the electrician's on order.
I was told by AM, and Danny told AM that they'd be in by the start of September. It's now the 25th of October.
And I simply report that, AM, as well. Put your three minutes, Brett. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2017-04. Authorize the city to borrow $270,000 for Metro Bank for the purchase of a 2017 Deep South Kenworth T370 pumper truck for the, to the city. We have purchased the truck. This is the bar in resolution. Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, Resolution 2017-04, authorize the city to borrow $270,000 from Metro Bank for the purchase of a 2017 Deep South Kenworth T370 pumper truck for the private apartment.
I say. Any discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. I was in favor, so you can both say aye. Aye. I was opposed. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is authorize the mayor to execute special work authorization agreement with the state Department of Transportation. A little explanation behind this, how Department of Transportation sets up your account for the city, or leave $2,000 into that account, to be used for anything that we ask the state to do for us. Put up a stop sign on a state highway, it's our responsibility, repair, rent the lights, school, those kind of things. This work authorization was terminated some years ago, and this re-institutes that. So, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute special work authorization agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation.
Second motion.
Any discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. I was in favor, so you can both say aye. Aye. I was opposed. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is authorize the mayor to execute contract with GMC or Goodwood Mills and Kable Inc. for the engineering inspection services for the 2016 resurfacing of city streets project in an amount of $106,400. This will be the design documents and the inspection of the work to be done. Any other motion?
I make a motion, authorize the mayor to execute contract with GMC for the engineering inspection service for the 2016 city, et cetera, in an amount of $106,400.
I say.
All right, there's been a proper motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. I was in favor, so you can both say aye. Aye. I was opposed. All right, the next item on the agenda is authorize the mayor to execute contract with Goodwood Mills and Kable Inc. for the engineering inspection services for Mitchell Circle Drainage Improvement Project in an amount of $53,000. This is part of the Mitchell Circle Drainage. It's been done, preliminary engineering has roughly been done, and this starts us into that, that process. So, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, authorize the mayor to execute contract with Goodwood Mills and Kable Inc. for the engineering inspection service for Mitchell Circle Drainage Improvement in an amount of $53,000.
I say. Any discussion?
A long time?
Yep. Any discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. I was in favor, so you can both say aye. Aye. I was opposed.
Mayor, I, since my daughter lives on that street, I will abstain from...
Okay. Okay. The next item on the agenda is approve the Network Fleet, Network Pricing Proposal from Horizon in an amount of $78,642.03. And we have representative, talk to anybody, ask any questions. Floor is open for a motion. The way we do the motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the Network Fleet Pricing Proposal with Horizon in an amount of $17,642.03.
Your second.
I say.
All right, any discussion?
I'd like to say that, I just came up before, and I, I didn't approve it, so, maybe state facts on it today.
I just feel like this, this little random, I mean, it's a little pricey, but I wonder if it's going to be beneficial to, I would say, for us to do this. I mean, I know it's beneficial, but do we necessarily need it? That's, that's, that's...
I think it will provide an essential addition to the maintenance for our fleet vehicles. And that's just like we were just, you know, going upon us hearing last week, that we've got a vehicle that needs a $7,000, $8,000 engine replacement in. This program can help on the maintenance side to really keep track of where all the services and checks and everything with the vehicle are going, so that they know exactly what's going on with their vehicles. And it keeps more tracking, you know, on them than just an individual being assigned in the department to try to keep up with oil changes or something. So, I mean, I think it can be very beneficial to, especially since as many vehicles as we have, I mean, I think we really need this program.
Well, I noticed on that particular video, I understand that that vehicle really had a lot of problems in that year, 2020, 2030, along that area, so, I mean, I know that's a good, a good legitimate achievement, you know, but within the past, we still have to keep it, that was a poor design, I understand.
Yeah, but this is something that will help keep track of that, so that when something does go wrong with it, you have paperwork that you can present to Dives and say, "Look, Dives, this is a problem we're having with your chargers this specific year. You know it, we know it." That's when you need that backing up, or that you can get them to do something instead of us completely footing off the bill all the time.
Well, my question is, people will be monitoring this, this report.
Each, each of the departments...
So they will know at all times where they are. I was just reporting to me today that a city worker was seen at Hibs Church on Sunday evening. I dressed it with Danny, and he's going to find out about it. But these kind of things, let me, he may have been, I don't know what it was to be, or who he was, to where it was, but I see this and do this all the time. So it goes back to the department. It's not like that we don't trust the department heads. It's not got anything to do with that, with responsibility.
Well, you can either make that part of this program the main thing or not. This program's sole purpose is not to keep 100% of the time where your vehicle employee is, as in Big Brother, you know, from 1984, watching over you. This program monitors and watches over his vehicles. Now, if it's a side part of you knowing where your vehicles are all the time, you know, it's there. But, you know, the, the main purpose of this program is not just to keep track of where that person is at. And you can either take it that it is, or you can take it as it's a good program to help maintain a fleet of vehicles that we spend a pile of money on every year. And if you look at the amount of money that we spend on these vehicles, I mean, we just, we just purchased a $270,000 pumper truck. We're looking at a $17,000 a year program to help maintain and, and track where the maintenance level is, where these vehicles are at. That's just a drop in the bucket of how much money we have if one of these vehicles were a...
And it's going to make the supervisors work much easier, too.
I'm, I'm going to open up to y'all.
We can let Duane address a couple...
Before I get you to stand, I want to share a quick story. When I came into council number 2008, which you heard a few minutes ago, Mayor Watson at the time showed me this little USB car. He said, "You know what this can do?" I said, "No, sir." He said, "This can help us with the fleet maintenance, it can also help us know where our vehicles are, it can also help us know when one of our cars exceeds the speed limit in our city limits. This is, this is something that can let us know when somebody sees a police car going 80 miles an hour down Highway 78, or did they have the blue lights on, or did they not have the blue lights on? So they obey the laws and the regulations that officers need to. And I spoke to Mayor Watson on Friday, and he certainly endorses this, and wants to see this, this put in place. Now, if you'd like to introduce yourselves, speak loud, we can have a piece this time.
Everybody, my name is Duane Brady. I represent Horizon Network Fleet, and I actually cover the entire state municipalities and businesses to, that need this product. Just a couple of things to talk about, and you've done a good job of discussing what some of the benefits are, but some of the other things to come up with this is, we actually have the ability, if there is a diagnostic trouble code that happens in one of your vehicles, you actually will have that back in the system to let you know, "Hey, there's something going on with this vehicle? Let's make the decision, do we need to pull this thing over before a $200 repair becomes an $800 repair?" It'll give you all of that kind of information, absolutely, the oil changes and that stuff is all part of it, but it goes a lot deeper than that. You might have a good example about knowing the speed, you know, if the lights are on, that sort of thing. So all of that stuff is definitely included in what we talked about there. Let's see, there were some other questions, I think, that came up. We talked about the, the maintenance, you absolutely have complete control over that. There is a piece of this program that will allow you to know where the vehicles are. One of the things that's really helpful is, instead of somebody having to monitor this all the time, you will actually have reporting that comes, you know, each 20 or 65 should be set up, where they get an email, let us know, "Hey, this is where my vehicle was all throughout the day, all throughout the week," and it will absolutely help you there. One last thing, the fuel savings. Vehicles, people that work in vehicles have a tendency, when the weather changes, gets really hot, really cold, particularly, you know, just not on purpose, it's just one of those innate human nature, this will actually monitor the amount of modeling that happens in between your vehicles. If you have an excessive amount, it actually will, can send a text message to one of your supervisors, and they can call that guy and say, "Hey, you know, your kiln is here, can you, can you cut that vehicle off?" So lots of challenges, and then I actually come in and help train everybody for it.
I have a question, Paul.
Oh, just a police officer there, so we could always have him in the direction, and that's the biggest trick that we have with the community. I don't know, I understand what you're saying, it's a good point. You've got to keep those police calls running all the time, so, and I know you're out there putting it, setting it up.
Hey, that's what man bothered up, the, the property is monitored. After a week, I have...
Any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. It sounds like you're not in the debate, but I saw a call for a vote, I'll matter for it.
Mayor. Ms. Brett, no. Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Bar?
Yes.
I'm prepared to tie. So in case of tie, I will vote, my vote is yay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is approve to pay the utility bill for three streetlights on Hackney, pole number 23, pole number 24, pole number 28. These lights are actually already installed. They were installed for the developer that owned that property at one time, and the, all the four motions said, discuss it, I think we should put this on the agenda, so, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the paid utility bill for three streetlights, pole 23, 24, and 28, southbound on the Hackney Street, and how he said he's...
I say. Motion's second. Any discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. I was in favor, so you can both say aye. Aye. I was opposed. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is authorize the mayor to execute memorandum of understanding between Calvary County Commission and Sea of Lincoln Maintenance Assistance for Paving Roads. These are the roads of the, 2016, when the task force put together, and they, there are all the roads that are on that list, including the task files, as well as chip seal. You know, the, the chip seal roads were not probably done until spring, to the weather permits, but the vice of our city attorney, go ahead and get that done, so we can work these people on the design side, go ahead and get them done. So, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between Calvary County Commission and the Sea of Lincoln Foundation's assistance for Paving of the World. I say, good motion.
Any discussion? I was in favor, so you can both say aye. Aye. I was opposed. Next item on the agenda is approve the latest bid for the upgrade of Badger Ward meters with CE endpoints. We discussed this in the work session at length, it's basically, first of all, we'll put the money into the warrant to cover what we estimate pleasure to do for this. This basically will allow us to remove the wireless system that we have today, which is a drive-by system where we have to, we have to employ it once, once a month, since two and a half days, driving all the way past everyone here in the city, and logging the usage of that meter for a month, and then bring that back and download it. This would allow it to be a CE endpoint or a cellular endpoint, so it would have real-time radio on all the meters in the city. There's no additional cost to the customer for this. But the biggest help it would be is if a customer has a leak, that was going on, and the water ran 24 hours, during the last 24 hours, the whole 24-hour period, then we could actually call him that next day and tell him that you may have a leak at your house, so it may save the customer money, instead of what, 30 days, we do it, I send it, and start at the first of the month, and for the middle 20, 75 days, the water ran. But it gives us that, but it also helps the city in saving money from the standpoint of, we would know water, possibly where water breaks water in our mains, in, in our subdivisions on longer roads, that we could utilize that and save, save us water. You know, water's no longer a cheap commodity, and so it's very important. I did speak to Mayor Watson about this on Friday, and he was all for this technology that's put into it, and as far as, as I said, as far as monetary, the money is set aside in a warrant to do that. Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the latest bid for the upgrade of the Badger Ward meter for CE endpoint.
I say. Any other discussion?
I understand that it's, it will be a work fee for the city, and then a loan, but he paid off, I mean, for the fifth, anything else.
And it will reduce debt to water, we've done five orders, and the water meters have been turned out with blackettes, turned out, water starts going to that area. The other thing, it's a nice thing for the, for the customers, is that you will be able to download an app, from your, whatever app store, whether your own Android, or whether your own app, or you can download an app, or you can download it on your personal computer Dives, put your account number in, put your information in, and you'll be able to monitor your water usage from your house. So, you know, if you're away on vacation, you're worried about your concerns, you might have spring a leak, or your kids left spring their own, or left, left the, the commode running, or whatever, that you're away, and we have a lot of summer folks here that are here for weekends, out in the summertime, they'll be able to monitor what's going on from wherever they are. So there's a huge benefit to the customer for this, the cities are starting to install. Although, we already have the meters accepted, all we're doing is changing, opening a wireless head to that meter for, to, to save, and keep the meters face the same, the meter accepted, meter headed. So, any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. I was in favor, so you can both say aye. Aye. I was opposed. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is approve the FY 2017 budget. At the work session on last Tuesday, we went out and did the budget with all the council members, and we do have a balanced budget with a small reserve left over, certainly what is large, is, is, we've seen in the last couple of years, there's a lot of things the city's trying to do, and I think we've got a good sound budget. I gave a copy of the budget to any council mayor for his review, and the, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve fiscal year 2017 budget.
I say.
Any discussion?
And the, and he had a chance to put it in, he didn't step back to it, he just, he just got it.
I gave it to him on Friday, and he said, "If you have any questions, you can contact me on Monday or Tuesday," and I haven't heard from him. But I will say this, any budget is just, it's just, it's just projection, and it's subject to be amended by, by the next council. So, the main thing was to show that we had revenue there to support our expenditures and things that we wanted in the city, and we've got those areas. So, this city has been very fortunate, and the fact that our projected budget, whether it be the revenue side or the expense side, we've come very, very... very close every year of the last four years to, uh, to meet those budgets, and, uh, I think this, this city ought to be, um, complimented, and the council complimented, and the staff complimented for, uh, for seeing that, that's happening. Any other discussion? You're now on call for a vote, all those in favor, say a aye. I was opposed. All right, the last item on the agenda is to approve the letting of bids for Mitchell Circle Drainage Improvements Project.
Can I make that mention?
As a matter of motion to approve the letting of bids for Mitchell Circle Drainage Improvement Project.
My second.
Anything, any discussion? All right. You're now on call for a vote, all those in favor, say a aye. I was opposed.
Oh, lady, then that's because my daughter lives on that street.
Thank you. You're standing.
Please.
All right, we move to the next items, report from staff. Staff members, get to the end.
I just want to remind everyone about this weekend, we had the Honda Trail Ride, which is Nursery Wrong's, and I hope everyone has had a chance to ride north of Sapporo Magnolia, across from that Oak High School, because there has been a sighting of a ghost, and I was told it was the librarian in the window on the second story, so if you haven't had a chance, at six-thirty at night, you might could see her on the second story, just getting ready for the Nursery Wrong's and the Honda Trail Ride. So, all that being said, it starts at seven o'clock on Saturday with trunk or treat, the Honda Trail Ride, keep that concessions going, the police department, the fire department will be out there, uh, we'll have Sparky out, and, um, we'll also have, uh, the police department is, uh, we'll have a bounce house out there, so we hope everyone will come out, have a wonderful time, do some trunk or treating, and, uh, also enjoy the Honda Trail Ride. We'll also have costume contests as well. If you don't have a lot of trunk or treaters and you want to set up, please give us a call over at the park office at seven-six-three-one-zero-zero-six, we still have some spaces available. We're lucky to have some people come out, we do have several families that come out that do not have trunk or treaters, that come to their home on Halloween, and they'll ask to join us. So if you'd like to, please do so. But again, uh, the trunk or treat is from seven till nine, and from seven till eleven is the Honda Trail Ride. Thank you.
I've tried to keep tabs, I think there's only been three council meetings in four years that you haven't met up, and that report, thank you very much for.
How many people come out, what you do?
Yeah, Zach. All right, um, all I want to say is, um, I've enjoyed my, my four years here, I've enjoyed the four years as a council member here, um, and, uh, I look forward to working with the, uh, the new council and the new mayor in any, any way that I can. As I leave here, I'd like to share with you what I'm gonna be doing. I've gone to work for a company called Tech Bridge. Tech Bridge is a nonprofit company that provides technical solutions to other nonprofits. We've worked with food factories, we've worked with shelters, homeless shelters, we've worked with YMCA's, YWCA's, United Way, um, the, uh, it's a fifteen-year-old company based out of Atlanta, and I have the entire state of Alabama under the under my belt, to, uh, bring technologies and resources to nonprofits. And, uh, the nice thing about what they do is, is most of the time, the corporate ownership and adoptions, those nonprofits are able to get this technology solution, whatever it may be, whether it be hardware, whether it be software, whether it be database related stuff, putting things on, um, mobile apps, so that they can do, um, what they do even better, that can volunteer resource, kind of, if they have volunteers, we do other things, if those are done, no cost to the nonprofit. So, uh, kind of excited for this, the way for me to go get back to my community, and, uh, I'm very excited to go do that, I'll still be the remaining member, and, uh, and be involved with the effects around here. So, that's my report, now.
Uh, I just want to say, I wish you guys, us, we, as we say, you're working with you, and, uh, I know I'm speaking around, and, uh, and, and venture out, and stay with it, you're not gonna say die. Mine is a term of the week, so, you, you're gonna be there, and that's good. There's one thing I want to point out that, uh, that come out, you know, is they can be, and, uh, it's called, Detroit City, uh, council, the mayor, that, it's about fourteen million, that they would be supporting three of them, and they wish that we'd be supporting those, it was two thousand fourteen, and they maxed out to be supporting those three. And I just want to put that out there, if anybody in the audience who, 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 hold on to, those things are tricky, and you, you read them, you think they, uh, say yay, then you say no, no, you sit around the table, it's about nine or ten, right there, and, so, it's, it's a legitimate explanation about them, or if they didn't come from you, but that one, that's not right, and, but, I just want to put that out there, to, 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 to the, to the city, uh, and, uh.
So, Commander, so Jane, Chris, I want to just express my appreciation for having worked with each of you, really, those four years, and sometimes, certain cases, eight years, nine years, uh, in some situations. Uh, I've enjoyed it, we've had disagreements, and we've had agreements, and that's all what council and working together is all about. I've enjoyed, looking at the big town.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brady. Um, I've, I've enjoyed working together, too. I want to thank the citizens of Lincoln, um, for letting me, or giving me the opportunity to, to try to help and, and serve the citizens of Lincoln, because that's who it's all about. And I want to challenge the incoming council and mayor to remember that. You can sit down and disagree, but you gotta remember, you're still together, you've got to come up with solutions, you've got to work together, and to do things that are for the citizens of Lincoln. And that's the way I was raised, and that's, that's what I've tried to do, and, um, like I said, I, I appreciate the camaraderie that we, we have had, and, and been able to work together, and sit down and sort things out, and differences, and come to solutions. And that's all I got to say, thank you.
Many of you have already said what I feel, uh, this is my city, too, and I will continue to work. I love it, I love the four generations in this city, and it's very important. And yes, this council has worked in unity through a lot of conflict, but we've stuck together, we bonded, we have disagreed, but respectfully disagreed. Oh, yes, any of us have gone home upset, we got over it, and that's the only way that a city can function. You have to, you have to believe in each other, and you have to follow the law. The law don't always dictate what you think, but we have to interpret, and we have done it. So I have no apologies for anything that I have done these four years, well, really eight years, uh, over the term, uh, but, uh, what am I gonna do? I hadn't figured it out, and then I had lunch on the patio today, and he said, "Have you figured out what you're gonna do yet?" And I said, "It's coming." So, uh, with three great brands, I'm sure I will be busy. So, the school is very dear to my heart, and Robbie, I will be one of those grandparents that will be helping you with parts. So, I, I'll find my way, never have to lost it, okay? Thank you.
All right, before we talk of the interim, I'm gonna close out if I can, say to staff, um, I, I have not enjoyed working with each one of you, uh, and you like council members. I've started to found some friends that I hold dearly, polite, um, many of you I did not know before I became either a council member, or became mayor in some cases, um, but, uh, I have worked with the, the staff, uh, in college, um, in London, and, uh, I really feel like the, the, what I've learned in person in the last four years, as far as the friendship and the respect folks have worked here, we've got a great staff, um, as I, as I lead years, mayor, um, and in most cases, they've been eight years, and had the forest council, uh, every one of you is about, you've been here for the entire time, and I think that's a huge, um, indication of the quality of staff that we have. We didn't have a massive turn of, um, of one administration, another, with two thousand eight changed administration, two thousand twelve changed administration. The staff has continued, they've improved, and built upon their professional skills, and, uh, it's exciting. I hope it issues the bar heads, and those who will represent the bar heads, will take back to your staff members, um, my comments, and, uh, and certainly, I would mention, um, two weeks, I'll be around to everybody, and, uh, and telling how much I appreciate it, but, uh, publicly, I want to say that, you know, of course, I have a tremendous amount of respect for this city clerk, um, she and I have worked well together, um, we may have given each other equalized once in a while, um, the, uh, but, um, she put up with me, I put up with her, and, uh, ninety-nine, forty-nine percent of the time, it's all good, but like, so the council members have said, sure, you know, at times we did disagree, but that's what, that's what city government's about, that's what any government's about. Come together, you collect your thoughts, and you kind of later, you compromise, and, but, uh, this clerk has worked, um, very well over the last four years for me, just worked under the, the, uh, the last mayor, how many years? Sixteen years? So, I'm starting to come to work, having a new boss, um, and, uh, November twenty-twelve is a little bit different, and, uh, but, uh, we work right well, but I'm proud of everybody here, and I need to get out of here. The bid, the vote, the bid, you come to vote, council, make the motion, you know? All those in favor? All those in favor?